All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Brisbane City Council, February 2nd, 2017. And we had a closed session prior to this. And we'll have a report out from the city attorney, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. The council considered a claim concerning a damaged tire because of a pothole. And the council voted unanimously to deny the claim on grounds that the city did not have a notice of the condition before the incident happened.
Thank you. Okay? So now, if you will, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present except for Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Item four, adoption of the agenda. I would like to add the swearing-in of our new planning commissioners directly following the adoption of the agenda. Are there any other items?
Then we're going to move all business in front of item eight, public hearing.
Okay, that's right. So we'll move all business, item A, up to above public hearing.
Yeah, so item nine in front of item eight, so the numbers transpose.
Right, after the consent calendar. Okay, anything else? Okay.
That's it. Move adoption of agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. We have an agenda. Next is oral communications, number one. Okay, I have two slips, or excuse me, three. We'll start with Tony Varios.
I think this is items not on the agenda, right?
Yes, this is.
Well, these are items that are not on the agenda, right?
Yes.
So.
Correct.
And that's not on the agenda would be the airplane noise, the SFO noise abatement deal. What do we call it? The community roundtable, met last night in Millbrae. And the, there was no, there's no feedback yet from the FAA on that. Supposedly, there may be some in this month. We have to wait and see. And there were, there were two of us from Brisbane that went down to speak there, Jay Patel and myself. And we were asking that they have televised, that they televise their meetings, record that, and that they create a legislative subcommittee or reactivate it, which they decided to do, both of those two things. And then they reviewed their budget to try to make sure that they had money to take care of those, those potential expenses. And then we encouraged them to put pressure through that legislative subcommittee on congressional representatives to make the changes that they can't do here locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Is Nancy Laxamana?
(inaudible).
Okay. Thank you. And Paul Bouschall?
(inaudible).
Okay, yes. Then you'll be able to get a chance to speak when that comes up. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay, we will move on. So now, we have the pleasure of swearing-in our new planning commissioners. We have Karen Cunningham, Colleen Mackin, and Von Doe. I don't believe Von Doe is here yet, but if you are here, please step forward, and the clerk will swear you in. Congratulations.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Thanks.
(applause). Thank you, Colleen.
Okay, excellent. We'll move on to item six, presentations. Item A is 2017 Council Work Plan: Key City Projects Categorized by Council Adopted Results. Staff report, please.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. It's my pleasure to present to you a, the 2017 Council Work Plan that is housed on our city website, brisbaneca.org. And this is the first time that the work plan has been accessible on the website in this manner, before it was just a Word document. But I'll show you where it lives right now, under About Us, in the top yellow bar, if you go down to City Projects. You come to a landing page that has the five council adopted community results laid out: Safe Community, Community Building, Ecological Sustainability, Fiscally Prudent, and Economic Development. Each of these tiles is clickable. And when you click on it, you'll see the various projects. There's 21 total projects. There's also a Word document that is able to be opened so that the projects can be viewed as a entire document. But just going back to the website, if you click into the first one, Safe Community, it has a description of that council result. And below it, it has the various projects related to that result, or most aligned with that result. And at the bottom of each page is a, the date that that page was updated. This is meant to be a real-time portal for the community members to come and see the status of various projects. Each of these pages has a link at the top to return to the landing page. And you can scroll through. They are not in any particular rank order, these projects. I wanted to note that. But in this example, Recology Expansion Project is number one. And I tried to put in pictures so that it would break up the text and have relevance to the project itself, or the work plan item. And there's also links to other pages on the website with the pertinent information to read more or view more information, such as the Baylands City Council Proceedings page. I'd like to note that the Word document also has the same exact links embedded within it, and that they are clickable so that one can easily get to the same webpage if they choose to view the projects via the Word doc. And then, just going back, again, photos, links, and this is, as you can see, a, a pull system that people can go and view the information. But I wanted to also note that at the bottom, in the footer of the website, is a link that says to subscribe to City News. This is a way for people to sign up and receive information related to the projects, as well as just general citywide news, Brisbane Baylands and Parkside Plant News. Those are our three distribution lists. So that's more of a push system if people choose to stay up to date with projects that way. I just wanted to point that out, as that's a new feature on the website. So, I will just mention, it's also on, the Your City Council page has a link to this work plan as well, right here. And again, I wanted to point out that there will be a date attributed next to the work plan, wherever it's linked, to let the public know when that was last updated. So that was on the first of this month. So that concludes my presentation of the work plan. If you have any questions or suggestions, I'd be happy to hear them.
Great. Thank you, Caroline. This is wonderful. It's a great way for the community to stay informed about what's going on, and I think it's a really good way to link information and, you know, real time. So I know you put a lot of work into that, and it will be a lot of work going forward, but we, you know, all the community really appreciates that. It's very, very helpful. So thank you. Any questions or comments?
Well, you know, I want to thank you, Clay, for, you know, agreeing to do this and putting Caroline on task to create it. You know, during the last week, you know, being the mayor, even though we're, you know, just all council members, even though, you know, being the mayor is just really being the chair of the council meetings, you still feel like, you know, you want to initiate things. And, you know, this was important to me, to have some kind of dashboard in real time to allow not only the council to understand what was going on during certain times, but mostly for the public. And I think this is, this is really cool. Let me absorb it, and, you know, and I'll provide some feedback, but, you know, just looking at it right now, I mean, this is, this is fantastic. And one of the things that I really like is that people can sign up to be informed about things that are important to them. And so they get notified when something new comes up, that's maybe the library or Parkside. I think that's a great, great feature. So thank you.
Anyone else? Terry? No? Clark?
Thank you, Caroline. Actually, we got to see a preliminary, Lori and I did, in our subcommittee meeting.
The Word document opened.
Yeah, I think, I think it's good for the community to be able to at least see, you know, what goals we set, you know, and we did last year, and, you know, we did a two-year budget, and see where we're at on those. So it's nice to know in real time, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a great addition.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll move on to item seven, the consent calendar.
Motion to approve items A, B, C, and D, which are council minutes of January 5th, council minutes of January 17th, ordinance 615, waiving second reading, to amend Brisbane Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, chapters, da-da-da. And item D, approve upgrade to city facility video security systems to comply with state law.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Excellent. Consent calendar passes. Next, we're going to move on to all business, item A, which is being moved up. Consider adoption of ordinance number 614 to change the year to which city council elections must be held to even-numbered years, statewide elections, and extending for six months the terms of office for city council members. Staff report, please.
Mayor and council, in January, the council introduced ordinance number 614 that changed the year in which city council elections must be held to June in even-numbered years. So it'd be in connection with the statewide election, and also, the ordinance would have the effect of extending the terms of office for current city council members by six months, meaning those who had been elected in 2013 would serve until June of 2018, and those who were elected in June, excuse me, November of 2015 would serve until June of 2020, I think that's right. So that was, that motion, or the ordinance was introduced on a 3-2 vote, and now it's back before you for consideration of a second reading. If it became, if second reading occurs and is adopted, it'll go into effect 30 days thereafter. The city clerk will notify the county of the change, and the county board of supervisors will take action to make that, make that election happen. Also, part of the ordinance provides that once that occurs, the city clerk will notify the voters in the community of the change, so that voters will be aware of the change that council made. The council also asks staff to look into what the cost of holding an election either in June of 2018, or if the council decided to have the election in November of 2017, as currently provided, what those costs would be. We had several conversations with the county registrar of voters, at least their staff, and certainly, the answer to that question, at least with respect to November of 2017, will depend somewhat on the number of jurisdictions that also have elections at that time. As, as we've informed the council, some of the cities in San Mateo County have decided to move their election cycle off of November of 2017 to November of 2018. Some have not decided yet what they're going to do, and some, I think two of them, Burlingame and San Mateo, will definitely have a November 2017 election, that their council has made that determination. So depending on ultimately what comes out of that decision will certainly drive what the cost would be if the council decides to hold an election in November of 2017. What we do, what we do expect, that if we have a November, excuse me, if we have a June 2018 election, the cost would be about $4 per voter, or about $10,000. By contrast, if the election were held in November of 2018 with a polling place, the cost would be about $2.70 a voter, or roughly $6,750. Council also asked about what the cost would be for the council candidate statements, and the county estimates that cost will still remain around $300 apiece. So I'll be glad to answer any questions concerning the council's introduction of the ordinance, or concerning any election costs. We obviously talk a lot about that in the staff report, and I can elaborate on that if the council so chooses.
Thank you.
I just had one question, Michael. More of something I think that should go in the ordinance is the Senate bill, is to reference the Senate bill that started this whole ball rolling.
We could certainly, we could certainly include in, include in the ordinance a reference that this is occurring because of the state legislation. We could certainly do that.
I think, I think that's an important fact to include in a, in the ordinance.
Good point. Okay. And I do want to note for the public that Councilmember Davis is not available this evening to attend, but she did send us all an email, which we now have now that we're up at the dais, and she said that she would like to vote on this matter. So while we are discussing it tonight, we will not be voting on it. But I didn't want to make public what her input is. She says that she is strongly against any term extensions, but especially a six-month extension that would adjust our elections to June. She thinks this is a huge and potentially costly mistake to no longer hold elections in November. So that's her comments. But she will be at the next meeting when we do vote on it. So I just wanted to let the public know that. Okay. So are there any questions for staff? And I do know we have a number of people here, and we will definitely get to public comment, but first, we're going to go over just the questions from the council.
Yeah, I don't have any questions for Michael.
Okay. Terry?
I have no questions for staff.
Okay. So I guess my question is, so were there any changes since the staff report was written as to any other cities that have taken action on this item? Because I know, I looked up, Redwood City had had a study session, I believe, last week. Maybe Ingrid can answer that question? I don't know. I wanted to make sure we had up-to-date information.
City of, the city of San Bruno have, has voted to have a November 2017 election.
Okay.
They just don't know if there is going to be a three-year term or a five-year term.
Okay. And Redwood City? Do you know what action they took?
Redwood City, there is no action, but they will come back with an ordinance in the next, at their next city council meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I don't think I had any other questions. So at this point, we'll open it up to the public for public comment.
If, 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 I may, Madam Mayor, I'd like to talk to the people first.
Sure.
Before we open it up to.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much. First of all, I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight, and also just for being engaged and, you know, wanting to participate. I know this is a very important issue for you, and, you know, I've been reading some of the, the social media comments, and, you know, and taking in all that information. You know, and this was first before the council here on the dais. You know, I had mentioned that, you know, I'm, I don't like the extension, you know? It goes against the grain for me. And I was hopeful that the council could take on the Baylands in a more, maybe in a more concentrated effort, and not have it be so extended through the month, that we could focus on, on the issues, and hopefully make a decision prior to, to the election in 2017. But, you know, through additional council consultation, you know, that, that just wasn't going to happen. I mean, we, this is a part-time job, you know? We have other things that we do in our lives, and, you know, just the workload's too, too great to, to work on it in that type of fashion. So because of that, I decided to change my mind. And, you know, for me, the, the main issue is, is the Baylands. It's not, it's not for me personally. You know, when you're on the council, you don't make very much money, and it takes a ton of time. You know, a slow week for me is about 10 hours. A long week is, you know, up to 20 hours. I mean, I do, because I love giving back, and that's, that's why you, you run for office. But, you know, the decision to, to extend was, you know, for me, is, is to really focus on the Baylands, and not have an election interfere with, you know, having that, that focus that I feel is needed, because the Baylands will be the major decision that this town will make, probably in its history. You know, from decisions that we made in the past to decisions that we'll make in the future. You know, lately, there's been a lot of chatter about taking away people's democracy. And, you know, I think of someone like Vladimir Putin, or Donald Trump, you know, where you're, you're suppressing the press, and bullying the opposition, and really, you know, creating regulations that, that deny the people a right to vote. You know, for me, extending the, the term for six months, so you can focus together as a community on a very, very important item, to me, is not taking away someone's democracy. If we had initiated this ourselves, sure, there, there's a point. But this is something that the state is mandating. You know, it's not the, the city of Brisbane. State wants elections in even years, and they've given us a choice. And this is just one of those choices. You know, some of the words that have been out on social media, they've been hard. You know, I don't get all of the, the comments, because people block me. And, you know, that's, that's their right. You know, that's how Facebook's set up. But I, you know, I'm not angry about it, but I, I will admit that I'm a little sad by some of the comments. You know, I think of someone like, like Clark Conway, who has been on the council for over 20 years. I mean, no one has given more to this community than Clark. He has put in thousands of hours. He's given up hundreds of thousands of dollars in not pursuing his career goals so that he could help our community. And when I think of, you know, Clark, and, I mean, yes, you know, Clark might run again, but he might not. And I think, well, boy, how would that be, not having Clark Conway, who's put in all this time into something like the Baylands, not be there at the end to help this community, you know, find a, a good decision for this project? I think of Councilmember Lori Lou, and I look at all the people in this room who are registered voters, and I would be very surprised if there was anyone who did not vote for Lori in 2009. And why is that? You know, because she works hard. She cares about the community. And, you know, she, she is someone who, you know, if she says, this is what I'm going to do, this is what I'm going to do. And, and for a lot of folks, I know that, that sometimes is difficult. You know, that's something that I, that I do appreciate about Lori, is that she doesn't care about what's happening out there. If she feels something is the way that it should be decided, she, she goes with it. And maybe it's not the best political thing, but, you know, we don't have enough folks like that, that are in public office, who, you know, she isn't going to put her finger up in the air and decide which way the wind's blowing, and make decisions that way. You know, when I ran for office in 2009, I was out canvassing, and this person asked me a question, is what's your opinion about the Baylands? And my response was, well, I'll do whatever the people want. And he says, no, no. What, what's your opinion? I don't care about, about the public, I want to know what your opinion is. And, you know, and that really hit home for me. And I never responded to a question like that again. You, you elect people because you think they're going to work hard. You elect people because you think they're going to work hard, that, you know, they're going to be good listeners, that they're going to be fair, and you entrust them to make decisions on behalf of the community. You know, it's very easy for me to just say, "Hey, you know, let's hold the election in 2017." You know, I'm an incumbent. I think people think I'm doing a good job. I know how to run a campaign. But for me, the Baylands not having an election at the same time is more important. So, you know, doing the extension and all of the folks getting upset, you know, really hasn't, is not providing the proper environment. I'm getting that. You know, I don't want a black cloud over this Baylands process. You know, instead of people focusing on the important issues, you're going to be focusing on, you know, these council members that are just, I don't know, in it for themselves, you know, and just thinking of us, and I think in the wrong light. So what I'd like to recommend to my council is to have a survey and to form an ad hoc committee of two council members and then representative from each of our advisory groups, Open Space, Planning Commission, Park and Rec, Complete Streets, and Safety, and draft a survey, something as very, very simple. You know, just one sentence that describes SB 415, another sentence that says why the council, these three council members want to do the extension, and then the question itself, should we allow the council members to have this extension? And then a very simple response, "Yes, it's okay to do a six-month extension so you could focus on the Baylands," or "No, you should run in 2017," and just leave it at that. I've talked with our city manager, Clay Holstein, about it, and could we get that in with the requirements from the county's election office? And if we started it right now, we could do it. And so just going to put that out there for my council colleagues.
Okay, any responses to that? Thank you, Cliff.
So you're proposing, Cliff, that we do a survey, and you keep referring to the three council members that, you know, when the term change may happen, or if we vote to change this, the term for all of the seats change. It's not for specific council members. It's for all the council members. It just is different times when that takes effect, whether it's this year or in three years. And then we would also be deciding whether we want June elections or November elections. So you're asking that we run a survey and then that that survey would be binding on the vote that we take on how we're going to approach this down the road? Is that
No. 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 I don't think it should be binding. However, I would uphold it, and I assume that the council would uphold whatever the results of the survey would be.
I'm sort of unsure how that would. I mean, I think it's a good idea to, or could be a good idea, to get the input of the public. I think that we've sort of seen the input of the public, but again, it's been more social media-driven.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear what the public who's here has to say. And again, it seems that if it's not binding, we're just sort of trying to get, again, the pulse. Personally, I would like to keep our election schedule in November. I think it's a better election schedule. It fits, and I'm not even saying this November, even if we're taking this November off the table or whatever November, I would like to still have our community have elections in November. I think that's the traditional time to have them. And I do think that personally, for me, as I've said all along through this, we've talked about it, I would like to try to change whether it's three or five years in the next election cycle and do it that way. But, you know, if you want time to have a survey done, I think that as long as it's not a leading survey, as far as trying to lead people down one path or another, I mean, I have no qualms about us waiting to make a decision until that happens. I have concerns what good that will do if we're not saying it's binding, and I'm not even sure if legally it could be binding.
You know, you bring up some good points, Terry. You know, since the election of Trump, I've been signing a lot of petitions, and I think a lot of people have been signing petitions. But petitions, they have an agenda. There is a direction that they want you to go.
Of course.
You can write a survey that is non-biased, and that's why, you know, I'd want to have members of our advisory groups, and they choose the people that would be on that survey team, so that we have something that is just the facts. And to me, if it's that way, people can make informed decisions. And if that is the will of the people, then I'm going to be comfortable with that. The six-month extension to be is, I think, is something that's palatable for folks. Maybe it's not. You know, and, you know, in me giving you this talk is that, you know, I'm not here to change your mind. I'm here to just tell you how I see it, right? And that's, you know, that's what you should do as a council member. But that doesn't mean that we could not have, say, a six-month extension, have an election in June, and have another four-and-a-half-year term, and have the next election in 2022 be in November. Council could easily do that, and then we could get into the November elections, and just this first one would be a June election. Again, this is trying to work with the council members, trying to work with the community to find some kind of compromise. I mean, you know, back in the day, I mean, that's how it used to be. Now things are just so black and white. It doesn't matter what the issue is, and it just goes right to people's emotions, instead of being able to talk things through and try and do what's best for the community as a whole. And that's what I'm trying to get at, and I hope, you know, it happens that way. Maybe I just have, you know, a fantasy idea of democracy, and, you know, but that's how I look at it, and I hope that we can come up with something that most people can be okay with.
Okay. Clark, any response to Cliff?
Want me to respond to that? Cliff, if we're asking one question, which is a yes-or-no question in a survey, why would you need all this committee and stuff? It just extends the time out. To me, I think this is a time of the essence, because it takes a long time to get through the county part. And I think if we do a survey, it can be convoluted and confusing, and it does distract from the Baylands. You know, people are going to feel or choose the way they believe. And we got people out here that choose the way they believe. One side is yes, one side is no. I mean, and we, as council people, choose what we believe. You know, I don't think a survey would do it. You know, for myself, I always base decisions on what I believe is best for the city. Okay? And, you know, to your point about some of the stuff that's been going out on social media, you know, certain comments, you know, about being self-serving and stuff like that, that you're doing it for yourself, they're just being selfish or wanting to extend their term for theirself, you know. If I was making a decision for myself tonight, and this is the God's honest truth, I would say, "Thank you for letting me serve. I'm done. I quit and walk out that door, and my life would be a hell of a lot better. I would be happier. I'd probably feel better," and that's the God's honest truth. And for somebody to say the stuff that they say, it's just Donald Trump-ism, alternative facts. Okay? We have facts that we are dealing with. And the fact is, we have something, I don't care what the other cities are doing, whether they're debating whether they should or shouldn't extend it. We all know at some point, we've got to make a decision on it. But for Brisbane, we have a very unique situation, and I think former mayor Ray Miller said it best that, and I'm going to paraphrase here, that the single most important decision that we have facing us right now is the decision on the Baylands. And we're in the process right now of going through the final environmental impact report on that. And right now, our goal is to try and get this done by August, but, you know, things happen and things come up. And so I think it was a great opportunity for us, with this coming down from the state on this Senate bill, to be able to extend it, regardless of what other cities are doing. To me, this is something that is really kind of a gift to the city of Brisbane. Now, people believe what they want to believe. Okay? That's okay. You know, one thing that we can agree on is we can agree that we disagree, you know, because that's a fact. And for myself, I want to extend it a year. Is that self-serving? Is that for me? Hell, no. I've been doing this almost 20 years, you know, and it takes its toll on your body, on your frame of mind, and your emotions, you know? It wears you down. It wears you down, and I have to listen to everybody, whether I agree with them or not. But I base my decisions on what I believe is best for the city of Brisbane. And you know what? I've been pretty damn successful as a single council member doing that. So to the survey, I don't, I am not for that, Cliff. It just extends it. I, you know, I want to be very straightforward and straight up and let the chips fall where they may. And I'm ready to move forward on this. It would be six months. I prefer a year. I think that way it just takes care of it, that we'll have the November elections, extend it for a year, and folks can do what they need to do, or we move on. And that's that. And we go through processing the Baylands. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Okay, well, I guess we're sharing all of our ideas right now, and we will get to the public, and you can respond. Yeah, I mean, I like your creativity in thinking about the survey, but I think surveys, you know, they ask a yes/no question, but they can be, it's all about how it's written. And, you know, my concern is, you know, people are going to reject, some people are going to reject the survey no matter how it's written. And, you know, as Terry mentioned, like, if it's one way and we don't agree, does that mean we have to accept it? And, you know, I would think, you know, the results of a survey or a petition or, you know, what people say is certainly something that we weigh in our decision, but, you know, we are elected, as Clark said, to make that decision, you know, for the best interests of the city. And so we have to weigh all of the different factors. And people who are, you know, in the public who are answering these surveys or signing these petitions, they might not have all the same facts that we have. You know, they might not be looking at the fiscal impact. They might not really be tuned in to what's going on on the Baylands. They might not be following everything that's going on in the city, but then they just get this survey or this petition, and someone tells them to sign it. And so, you know, I think you can look at that as one factor, but I wouldn't say whatever the survey says is what I'll vote, because I think that's a little too dangerous. And, you know, I have to say to Clark that, you know, this is definitely not about ego. You know, this is a huge commitment and sacrifice, not just for ourselves, but for our families. You know, for me, it's a huge sacrifice to be away from my family. But I do this because I care about the community, and I feel the same way that Clark does, that, you know, I think, given the Baylands, it makes sense to extend it. You know, it's a state mandate. We have to do it. So extending it makes the most sense for our city. And if six, seven months is more palatable, is a good compromise, I'm fine with that. But I do like your idea, Cliff, of getting back onto a November cycle. And so if we did have an election in June of 2018, to have it only for, you know, four-and-a-half years or whatever and a half years, so that eventually we get back to November cycle, because, you know, that was the whole intent of the Senate bill, to increase voter turnout. And having it in June, I don't think would accomplish that. So, you know, I'm interested to hear what the public said. I did read the petition. I found it very interesting that when I clicked on it, it thanked me for signing it, and I kept clicking and accepting, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," and then the numbers kept going up, as if more people had signed the survey, and I had emailed Linda to make sure that, you know, that gets corrected. So, but, you know, the survey, you know, I appreciate you reaching out to the community, but I think that, you know, in order to really know what's going on and understand the whole situation, it's a complex issue. You need to do what you're all doing, is show up at a city council meeting, read the staff reports, and participate. So with that, I will open it up to the public. I do have two slips, and there are more people here I know who would probably like to speak. So Ingrid's going to hand me the rest, and then when I get through the list...
Tony Varios was probably first.
Okay, that's right.
Probably set him aside as he spoke, but I think...
You're right. Okay, thank you. So when I get to the end, if you haven't given a slip, you can certainly come up. And I think is the time five minutes for this? So you have five minutes or less. So we'll start with Tony Varios.
Mayor and city council members, thank you. I appreciate the emotion, the emotional comments that Clark made and Cliff as well in terms of what you saw on social media and how you felt about it and your commitments. From my perspective, we're all neighbors. Most of us are friends, and that's not the issue. The reason that there was, that there were strong words or emotional feelings about this issue was because the way it was handled. When, the only mandate that there is, I keep hearing that word, the only mandate that the state put down was to get to an even year, period. They didn't care how you do it. The city attorney gave many alternatives. There was no push from the city attorney or the city staff to do it one way or another. And what rubbed people the wrong way was that three of our city council members decided they wanted to do it this way, whether it was one year, six months. Six months came up later because of Ray Miller's suggestion. And when that came up, there wasn't a very in-depth discussion about the merits of that. Councilmember Davis said, "I don't think that's a great thing," but there wasn't a lot of discussion about that either. And so I think it's very troubling, because anytime the State Fair Political Practices Commission makes a ruling that there's no potential for conflict of interest, that makes me think that they don't know what a conflict of interest is, because I don't see where, outside of Congress, which lives with conflicts of interest every day, they're doing it all the time, most bodies don't get to... day, they're doing it all the time, most bodies don't get to, to vote themselves raises and vote themselves term extensions, period. They can say, "This is what we want," send it to the voters, and the voters either approve it or deny it. That's not a problem. And so, for me, it's not an emotional issue versus a logical issue, and, and having the Baylands, nobody argues that the Baylands is the most important issue coming up, but using that as a leverage to say that you can't, we can't take a risk of having an election interrupt that, when Clark mentioned, I think, tonight, that the goal was to try to finish those proceedings by August, and we just don't know that that's going to happen, Cliff figures it's not going to happen. Well, whether it happens or not, all the incumbents know how to run an election. They don't necessarily have to take three months to run an election in a town with, what, 2,000 voters? And everybody knows you, everybody likes you, unless you've done something that they decide they want to boot you out for, you're going to get reelected anyway. So I really don't see what the big issue is with having an election. And Madison said you could even suspend the, the Baylands hearings for a month or two, if that was necessary to make it easier to do an election. So there's just, I just think the arguments that you made for doing an extension don't hold water. Emotionally, they're fine. And I certainly respect what Clark said about, "This is not an ego trip for people, and it's a, it's a big burden to serve." I respect all of that. I respect all of you, but really don't like the way this was done, and don't think the arguments hold water. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Paul Buskal?
Good evening, city council members. I'm Paul Buskal, the official designated representative for the electronic petition against ordinance 614. This electronic petition is not the actual petition needed for a referendum. In fact, the official referendum process does not begin until after an ordinance has been adopted and attested by the city clerk. This petition is, however, very symbolic and meant to be persuasive. In fact, it is meant to impress upon you the will of the people, and hundreds of voters who disapprove with your decision to extend your terms. If you adopt ordinance 614, we, the people, will file an official referendum petition of protest. We have elicited the help of legal counsel to make sure we file the referendum correctly. I have a team of people who are prepared to go door-to-door with me, and we will quickly collect signatures, because the electronic petition has provided us the names and addresses of hundreds of voters against your extension of terms. In addition to the petition, we have more databases of voters who are committed to our cause, and we believe that we have easily exceeded the 10% needed for referendum. We also believe that the number of voters will continue to grow, and we will continue to add them to our mass group. The spirit of our petition is simple: Do not extend your terms. Continue with the November 2017 election as scheduled. Select an alternative option to satisfy SB 415. The choice is yours, but if you force a referendum, you will surely lose voters. So with that said, you know...
Copy of the petition? Because I haven't seen anything.
With the names of the signatories, we haven't received...
Okay, so I said it's online petition. Okay, that's just to show you that there are people that are...
I haven't seen anything.
Okay. So the actual signed petitions will be coming. And to your comments about social media, I'm not on social media. I'm on Nextdoor, if that's considered social media in Brisbane, but not Facebook. The people we've talked to have not made derogatory comments towards any of the council members. Okay? You may personally have heard stuff from other people, but my point is, is that, you know, we appreciate your service to the community. The Baylands issue has been a cumulative effect for this entire community. Okay? We sat on the DEIR. The staff has put in countless years, 10 years ago, we talked about the Baylands. You know, if, if you want to have a streamlined, focused intention on one thing, why did we come up with the Parkside Plan? Okay? You know, why, why are we now talking about industrial way, doing mixed use, which I think is a great idea? Okay, that could satisfy any Parkside Plan housing. But, you know, this is not a witch hunt. This is not where people are taking this personal. This is a fact, okay? The state has not mandated that we need to extend terms for council members. They just say you need to come up with a plan for years that are on even years for elections, okay? Don't think that you're the only ones that can carry this Baylands process to the end. Okay, this has been hundreds of people working on this in this community, okay? And it's just now coming to the council. The Planning Commission, Greg Anderson, I mean, I could go on and on with people. Every one of the people that signed this petition, online petition, has not been double-clicked, added on, they're all registered voters. And I'll get an answer to you for the, the, the paper petition is coming, okay? So, you know, do we need to have a referendum? I hope not. Just to extend your terms, you guys can go, come down here, if you're not reelected in November, and sit down like everybody else does in these seats, and make decisions for this community like we have. You don't just need to sit on the council to be making decisions for this community. Thank you for your time.
Nancy Laxman.
Nancy Laxman of Brisbane Humboldt Road. This is not my referendum, or whatever you want to call it, online petition. I was not asked to vote yes or no. I was told, "Don't even read it if you don't want to like it." Okay? So I have been insulted by it, on social media, on Facebook, on Nextdoor. I have been insulted. I'm going to read for you what I want to read, because I have never been asked my opinion. I've been discouraged. My opinion is this petition has no merit, and I refuse to sign it. I want you to know that, because if this represents 10% of the active voting base, you can be assured there are 90% who did not care, or who did not feel this was a necessary item to speak on. And I guarantee you, there are people who signed that petition, Lee Panza included, who are now realizing this is not what it seems. You, of all people, you being the council members, have seen when there is a hot topic, and who comes? Only those who are not happy. The rest of us, if we feel you are doing what we voted on you to do, do not feel it's necessary to come down here and tell you so, because we expect you, our voted council members, to do the right thing. And thank you, Clark, for speaking up, because I agree with you 100%. So we, I totally accept, and I've told the people that I have spoken to directly, that you have the right to organize petition and voice your opinion. I sign at least two petitions a night on this whole Trump crap, okay? But I don't get a chance to vote yes or no, I just vote if I like it or not. But I do too, despite the bullying and harassment I've experienced with the social media site when I voiced, "I don't agree." I agree with you. Many people in this town, when they know the facts, all the facts, most importantly, these three facts. This was not a mandate that you asked for. We know that. You didn't pick it out of the sky and try to benefit as individuals. You are five council members who have taken an oath to serve and do what is best for the city. If the state had not issued this mandate, we wouldn't be discussing this subject. You are 100% in your right to have reviewed, recommended, and voted on this motion. You reviewed what staff offered as suggestions, and you actually voted on a motion that was more of a compromise than what was recommended by staff. This is a motion approved for six months, which is far less than most of the surrounding towns' county boards of governing and education. This was not mentioned in the petition, that it was six months, or in almost every one of the numerous social media notes, which were misleading and overly dramatic. There is no accusation of wrongdoing on your part, collusion, treachery, or ulterior motives, though residents were led to believe this. Truly, I am sickened by the words of a few people in this group. I was heartened by it to have a one-to-one dialogue with one individual here who I know and trust, and I thank him for his viewpoint. And that's all I wanted to do, was hear it out and give my viewpoint. I was accused of only caring to stand up for an individual on this council, because I supported this person in the past. How insulting. I was accused of not standing up for my voting rights, because I didn't vote, uh, stand up for somebody else's. How silly. I respectfully accept whatever decision you make during this very divisive conversation. I hope all five of you stand united against bullying conversations, because it's only just begun, and I can't think of a better group of people in these difficult times to stand with. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Glenn Fieldman?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to speak because, on behalf of holding an election in November of this year, serving out your terms that you were elected to, to fill. And I'm not going to speak very long, but I was thinking today about how to say this. I think an additional election, which this will mean, will cost money, it will take time, it will interrupt the discussion of the Baylands. But elections always interrupt policy discussions. There's, there's really nothing new about that. But as the credit card commercial famously said, you know, an election might cost X, Y, and Z, but the legitimacy of government is priceless. And I think enough people have objected to the idea that the council will extend its own terms, that it's really worth it for you to think about the question of legitimacy as you make these decisions that you have to make. So think about that. I think the country is really going through an incredible legitimacy crisis right now, where people are really distrustful of government at almost all levels, and I think that's really a bad thing. And one of the reasons I came down here tonight has to do with things that are a lot bigger than Brisbane. It has to do with the relationship of people to their government in this country in general. And I think it's very corrosive, it's very bad, and I would like you to think about that when you make this decision about an election. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Peter Grace?
Thank you. My name is Peter Grace, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak. I actually do, Clark, have the petition here. I can read it out for you, if that would be helpful.
You wish so.
Let me come to it, and I'll come later in my speech. I spoke, I live in Brisbane, I spoke at the December 8th, 2016 council meeting, as you know. I spoke against extending the terms of the members of the current council. And against postponing the November 2017 elections. For the people at home, if you want to see when we spoke, go to minute 14:30 from the, from the December 8th meeting. For me, it's a matter of principle that elections are held when they are due. The right to vote should not be taken away under any circumstances. The city attorney's report for the December 8th, 2016 council meeting laid out five options for bringing the Brisbane council election into compliance with the state requirements by November 22. Four of those five options began, "Conduct the election for city council in November 2017." Could I turn to the city council and ask him, could I confirm, turn to the city attorney and ask him whether he can confirm that?
Michael?
Can you confirm that on your December 8th options, there were five of them presented?
You can give your public comment, and we, if the council wishes, we can ask those questions.
At the January, and at the December meeting, the vote was postponed. At the January 2015 meeting, the council meeting, the city attorney offered three options. Two of the three options were, "Hold the election November 17th." One was to extend terms. The council voted, as you know, 3-2, a rare split. The two who voted against, Terry O'Connell and Madison Davis, who isn't here, are due for reelection in 2017. As, so you...
19.
To 19. So you, as city council, had the opportunity to vote 3 to 1 today. Is this a good idea? After the January 5, 2017 council meeting, I was really bothered by what I saw as an erosion of our rights, and worked with others to create an online petition, and so will a number of other Brisbane citizens. The petition says, "We, the undersigned Brisbane residents, who are duly registered voters, request the following actions of our city council. One, hold the November 2017 election for three city council seats as scheduled." That's my matter of principle. "Enact a resolution incorporating a one-time elections with either shortened or lengthened terms, to ensure municipal elections will take place in even number years, beginning November 22, as required by the California law." Is it SB 641, or am I getting the numbers confused? Three, eliminate extensions for council members currently serving those terms expire, whose terms expire at the end of 2017. I, I see nothing that's wrong in, in what was written. I can well understand Laurie's concern about going to the petition, having a look, thank you doing so, about the section that, when you look down, it says, "Thank you for voting." And I can assure you, Laurie, I can assure you, Clark, and I can assure you, Cliff, and I can assure you, Terry, and Madison's not here, that none of your names are on the petition. Not one single one. How do I know? Because I've looked at the petition and that, and looked at all the names, and then matched it against the voting list for Brisbane that I bought from, from the people on Palamus.
Peter, you have a copy of the whole thing?
Of what?
Of the petition.
No, I don't. I've got bits of it, and the petition's on two parts, Clark. It's both online and a written one. But I want to lay out what was, what were people being asked to sign for. And that is, we've collected over 200 signatures of Brisbane's, in fact, over 250 signatures for Brisbane citizens. So please listen to the voters who gave the opportunity to serve Brisbane and do the right thing for Brisbane. Hold the November 2017 election as promised and planned. And this is a personal plea. We want to vote for you, and I'll campaign for you, but for heaven's sakes, hold the election in 2017, in November, as budgeted and promised and planned. Thank you very much indeed.
Colleen Mackin?
Thank you for an opportunity to speak. I find this all extremely painful. I hear the anguish, council members taking it as a referendum on whether you're doing a good job, or whether you should be there, or whether we realize the number of hours that you spend, and how incredibly difficult it is to serve. That's not what it's about. I hear the rationale about the Baylands and the importance, and Ray Miller said, "This is a one-time deal. We're going to have more of those." I hear impassioned pleas from other people about, "You know, we have confidence, we voted them in, what's six months?" I have a sacred right to vote. I mean this, this is really important to me. So for people that say, "It doesn't matter, it's six months," what, what does it matter? They're taking away my right to vote. So why would you not want the validation? You, you may end up running unopposed, but these are terrible political times. Why would you not want that validation? I don't even think you'd have to campaign. But nobody wins unless we have an election. We have people on ballots that are unopposed all the time. We still have the election. We don't cancel the election. We have campaigns where sometimes there's incumbents, and then there's total unknowns, and we might say, "There's no way that person's going to win. Why don't we just cancel the election?" We don't do that. We don't do that here. I, I think you've taken this personally, and it's not a referendum just on you. And yes, tempers have flared, because you're, you're taking away what, what is a sacred right to people. And if you were not there and here, and someone said, "I'm just going to take away your right to vote," you might feel the same way. I think the, the resolution that I'd like for you all to consider is hold the election, because everybody wins then. People who say, "I have no problem with six months," they'll vote for you. People who say, "I don't..." People who say, "I don't care," they won't vote. Then it's all clear, it's all clean, everybody wins. Take all the impassioned pleas, everything, put it aside. Everybody wins. How can you not win if you have the election? And I think you'll all win again anyway. So I, I, I don't understand the consternation. This isn't about Baylands. This isn't a referendum here or a petition or how many people signed or can I see the names. It's about taking away someone's right to vote. It's that simple for me. Has nothing to do with you. Change the faces. You have Terry and Madison aren't terming it out. And I, I contacted both and said, "If you supported taking away the election, I'm going to fight you tooth and nail because I think that's wrong." It's just wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Tainter.
Hi, Pat Tainter, Butterweed Lane. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I am not in support of this ordinance for two reasons. The main one is that as it is written, the election is placed in June. That is a primary, that is the, the election time of primaries, which is among the lowest voter turnout of any election that is held. The intent of the state law is to increase voter participation. And yet we, the, the law or the ordinance as written will move it into a timeframe which is among the lowest of voter participation rates. And we've looked, I've looked at the numbers from the county, it is very, very low in, in June. And so a, as an interim basis, if that's what happens, that's fine, but it should not be as a permanent basis to hold the election in June. That's my primary concern. I think that really disenfranchises people. Beyond that, going, looking at the question of extending terms, when there is an election, there is an agreement between the electors and the elected. What office? For how long? It's as if it's an implied contract. Neither side has the right to go and change that without another election. And yet this law will do that. It will change what was an agreed upon at the last election, what were the rules of the game as it was done at that time for years. Now, the next election, if it's for five years and everybody knows that, I have no problem with that. But to, to go ahead and change it without the consent of the electors, I think is incorrect. It's a matter of principle. It has absolutely nothing to do with, with, with anybody. I'm not on social media. I avoid it. Okay? But this is very important in terms of a matter of principle for the covenant between the electors and the elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Eames.
Thank you, council members, for your time. Danny Eames, Brisbane resident for 30 years now. I think the price will be much heavier on the council and ill feeling and ill will than the cost, the fiscal cost to go through with the election. And I think this has become much more cantankerous than it really needs to. I pay my taxes, I follow the rules, I have my agreements, I keep my agreements, I keep my commitments. And I think, uh, you should keep, keep your commitments with the voters. It's, and I don't care if it's just me or 200 or 1,000 people, because it's me. I have a democratic right and you don't need anybody else in this room. I'm telling you that I don't want to lose that right to vote. And that should be enough. But no, we have to solicit a consensus and get more people involved. So that's what's happened. But it should only take one person. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Lee Pianza.
It still seems strange to be saying this, hearing it. I have an idea that I wanted to throw into the hopper along with a lot of other ideas. It essentially comes down to the six-month term extensions that have been tossed around, but it would allow us, the voters, to do it. Basically what it would do, and I provided a chart in that handout that shows graphically several alternatives. I'm going to be just talking about the third one, alternative two-way. But this coming election in November, we would elect the three seats as normal for four-year terms, but we'd also put in front of the voters a plan that would, once adopted, 30 days later, would extend those terms. It would also extend the other two terms by six, uh, six months. And that would get us into sync with the requirements of the state law. But it would happen, it would be done by the voters. It would be, Cliff, you talk about, um, a survey, this is the best survey there could be, put it in front of the voters. It can't be done before November without a special election, but it can be done in November without changing the terms of that election. It just means that subsequently, this would go into effect and it would provide the extension and get us in sync. So I'd like to ask the city attorney to look at that and ask you to consider it because it basically seems to do what everyone's asking for, but it's controlled by us, the voters. So please consider it.
Those are all the slips I have. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Please come forward. I think I saw Carolyn raise her hand first and then Dan.
I've been listening to both sides of this issue. My concern is the Baylands. It's a, we, the Citizens Advisory Group, Krebel, all the different groups, Open Space and Ecology, worked a full year of studying the material. The city, um, the Planning Commission worked a year to come up with a plan. The city council is both trying to run the city and do the Baylands at the same time. And I've had a lot of time to think about it. And frankly, I want to see the city council have the time to really thoroughly look at this. I don't want to have the city council just, um, trying to do too much at once. This is so important. So initially I was really strongly feeling like we needed to have the election. I don't feel that way anymore. I think that we really need the city council to have the time to thoroughly look at this. I think the Baylands is the most important thing that we're going to be looking at for years to come. We have to decide what we want to do with the property and it involves much more than just Brisbane. And so I am really starting to feel that maybe we should extend the term at least six months. And that way, that gives the city council more time to look. I don't want to be looking at meetings and know that the city council has not had an adequate time to look at the material. And I'm, you know, I, I'm afraid that might happen. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to say that I hope that the people understand just what a heavy lift this is. It is a big deal. We went, you know, we put a lot into it and I want the city council to have the opportunity to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Sorentino.
I signed the petition because I was told that it was a year extension and now I found out it was six months. So I don't think that's that big a deal. I agree with Clark. I'm very happy that you spent so much of your time and energy devoted to this issue and to help the city of Brisbane. I would be concerned if we had an election that some of you may not want to run and not be on the city council and that we would have some people that would have no idea, no history, no background, making the decisions for us. So I don't know why we would have an election asking any of you, telling you that we may or may not want you to be on the city council. I want you all to be in the city council. I value your experience. I value your commitment. I could not possibly run for city council and spend the time and energy and the commitment that you people have. I very much thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Dan. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Linda Detmer.
Thank you, city council, for all the hard work that you do. I do appreciate it. I want to say that I've worked very hard on the Baylands. I've submitted lots of questions. I've read the draft EIR and the EIR. I'm very up to date. It's hard to remember it all. You have to refer to it now and then when you are concerned. My fear is that this is going too fast, that the studies and the deliberations that the council is trying to do in a short amount of time is not enough time to really absorb the impacts to Brisbane and to preserve the very, very unique and special community that we have. I signed the petition wholeheartedly because myself and several people came and asked. They pleaded with you in December to not extend your terms and not take away our right to vote. I'm 62 years old, I'm almost 63, I've voted in every election since I was 18, and I value my sacred right to vote. Your terms are up. You knew this was coming, it's not a surprise. The deliberations on the Baylands can go on until you're thoroughly satisfied with what you need to know about that property. So please give us a chance to support you again, to vote for you again, to give you our nod of approval, which I want to do, but please don't take away my right to vote. There are over 200 other people who I know feel the same way. That's a voting block. I hope you'll think about that.
Is there anyone else, before we get to the second round, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Joel Diaz and then the gentleman next to Linda, I don't know your name, sorry.
Good evening, honorable council members. I'm Joel Diaz. Yes, I, I too, signed the petition and I'm against the ordinance as proposed and I wish you would continue with the scheduled election for November 2017. And, um, you know, I, I try to do things in life based on principle, what, what I think is right and wrong. And, you know, sometimes I'm tempted by the end and sometimes, sometimes, sometimes the end justifies the means. And it's a trap, it's a trick. And, and really, because the end is always a moving target. And if we have means, we can accomplish any end. We have to have a good means. And that's the goal we should have, is a good means. And democracy, having elections, allowing voters, is a good means. And when we circumvent that means, we're circumventing our principles. And if we're doing it because the end justifies the means, we are going to be sadly disappointed at some point. Maybe not this time, but it's a flawed process. You know, there's a saying that a bad tree will never give good fruit. And that's kind of what that means, is that the end does not justify the means. And, you know, watching the media and things that are happening these days, I, I don't recognize my country anymore. I don't recognize America. And it's becoming very divisive. But, but I know that it's still there. I know that our values are still there, our country's still there, I have faith in our people. And at the root of that, at its, at our core, is democracy, our constitution. We have a First Amendment right to freedom of speech. We have a right to assemble, we have a right to petition. And, uh, you know, I, I don't think it's appropriate for government, although it happens, to, to try and stop that, to, to chastise the public for speaking online. I get that it hurts feelings. A lot of people say mean things about me, you know, um, I just try to let it go as much as I can. Um, and it's freedom of speech. So, you know, I think you have to protect our rights, observe our freedoms. And if the people have a legislative power to do these things, referendum, I think you need to respect that right and deal with it in the legislative process and try not to make it personal. It's not personal for me. I appreciate the job you're doing. This is more professional, it's business, we just simply have a difference of opinion. And we have an equal right, just as you do. You have every right and power to do what you're doing. We, as the people, have an equal right and power to do what we want to do. So thank you for listening.
Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Sandeep Patel. I'm a resident of Brisbane. And what I find most interesting about our democracy is it, it's a conversation. Sometimes it's a conversation where there's a majority and a minority, but it's always a conversation. No one, I don't believe, on this council has been elected by 100% of the vote. And maybe you've been vote, maybe you've been voted in by 80%, 90%, or maybe 99%. But there was that 1% that wanted to say what was on their mind and they did that on election day. Or they did that before election day. Or they were able to engage in a conversation with people that were running. And the Baylands isn't a one-sided debate. I think that what I read, what I hear, what people say in the community is, they have opinions. And sometimes there, those opinions are different than what maybe the council members believe. And I think that an election is the prime time to have those discussions. And what I hear is that there is this, some sort of deadline as it relates to the Baylands that justifies taking a right, taking away people's rights to vote. And well, maybe that's a minority, maybe it's just one person. But that's a self, self-imposed deadline. The discussion of the Baylands can be discussed, that discussion can go on for years, another year, two years. And I, I believe that the election is a prime time to have a debate on those issues and that if there is even one person that wants to have that conversation or, or voice that dissent, they should have that, they should have that right enforced. And that's why I'm against this proposition. They should be able to voice their opinion on that day.
Thank you. I see your hand. Is there anybody else who has not yet spoken who would like to speak on this issue? Jay Patel.
Uh, just wanted to thank you guys for all your hard work. I, I do appreciate it. I think the community appreciates it. I'm not for extending the terms, just as a matter of principle, and it's created a lot of conflict in our community. And it's just kind of unfortunate, it's kind of ripping everyone apart. I do believe the Baylands, Baylands will go on a very long time. Could go on for another, another decade. It's been talked about for many decades prior. So I just wanted to express my opinion on that.
Thank you.
I do appreciate all your hard, hard work. Thanks.
Is there anybody else? Okay, we'll come back for one more round. Make it brief, please. Tony Varios.
Thank you, Tony Varios. Make it brief. I'm sorry that anybody felt bullied or put upon by social media or any other means. I'm sorry that anybody signed the petition and didn't read it first to understand what it said. And, but I'm most sorry that, that in the council deliberations, that the three of you who voted for the six-month extension didn't listen to the public who was here that night in December and said, "Don't do it." Because as much as your feelings matter to us, we like you, like I said, your neighbors, friends, and we, most of us voted for you, that's why you're here. Most of us haven't changed our minds about that, but we're really pissed off, really upset at the arrogance of that vote. And the reason that we're upset about it, as I said first time, is because most of us don't accept- don't accept and adhere to the opinion of the Fair Elections Commission that says there's no conflict of interest about it, even though it's a burden for you to serve. It's a burden you chose. You decided to run. You can all quit anytime you want, and then the council can appoint other people. And if you all quit, then I guess the city staff and the city attorney appoint somebody. But the fact of the matter is that anybody can die anytime, get sick anytime, and have to pull out from their position of service, and then the city council goes on. Life goes on. And as Paul Bouskow said, and I think Colleen and a few others, there are a lot of qualified people in this town, well-educated, they're paying attention, they've been following this thing and putting in a ton of hours that none of them want to put in, just like you don't want to put it in. But they care about the town just like you do. And so, I think that you really better, it would be a good thing to give that a second thought. As Colleen said, you have nothing to lose, or someone here, and we've talked an awful lot of time, there's nothing to lose by holding this election, and there's a lot to lose by not. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, come up.
How do you do? My name is Karen Glauber, and I don't think any of this was about any of you people personally, but from my point of view, I've lived in this town for 22 years, and I've always found it very cute, darling, private, sacred, and I feel like I, along with a lot of other people, have been thrown under the bus to have our vote taken away. You know, this is going on on a national basis, and then to have our cute little protected town just decide what you want, I just find way more than upsetting.
Okay, are there any other comments? Great. Well, thank you all for your comments. So, I had a couple of follow-up questions to staff. So, one, or I guess a comment as well. I forgot to mention that a big part of my thinking on this is the cost, and that's why I asked for staff to figure out what the fiscal impact was of holding the elections in each of the timeframes. And I just want to confirm for myself and the public. So, in looking at it, it says if we hold, the staff report says if we hold the election in November 2017, and at this point, only San Mateo and Burlingame have agreed to do so. If those are the only, assuming those are the only two cities, there may be others, but those are the only ones that have so far voted that way. Also, San Bruno has, but that was, I guess, after the staff report, so we don't have the numbers on that. But without San Bruno, the estimated cost would be $17,500. To hold an election in June of 2018, the cost would drop down to $10,000. And if it was in November of 2018, it would be the least expensive of $6,750. So, I just want everyone to be aware of that as well, that, you know, the fiscal impact is the least if we have the election in November of 2018, and the most if we have it in 2017 and in November, and in between if we have it in June. So, the other question I heard raised by several people was about the legality of it, and I had asked our city attorney to confirm that the FPPPC statement, the Fair Political Practices Commission statement, and I believe other city attorneys in other cities have also attested to this, have reviewed some staff reports from other cities, that there is, that it is not illegal or improper for a current city council to extend their terms. Can we have the city attorney comment on that, please?
That's correct, that it is not deemed a financial conflict of interest for the council to extend their terms of office.
Okay. Thank you. I understand some people have, you know, differing opinions on the principle, but that's different than the legality or, you know, conflict of interest rules. So, we've had extensive public comment. We've had discussion. Is there anything else that any of my colleagues would like to add? We're not going to vote on this item today. I guess the question is whether to have a survey. It doesn't sound like there's a lot of traction for that.
I don't think.
Unless there's anything else, we can continue the matter until we have.
I wouldn't even continue it. I'm ready to vote on it. I'm ready to vote on it. People said what they said. You know, I said it at the beginning. We agree that we disagree, and you're going to do what you got to do, and I think we should just move forward, let folks do what they need to do, and we'll do, the council, what we need to do. I'm basing my decision what's best, I think, is best for the city of Brisbane. A lot of people out there, at least that showed up tonight, are not happy with it. We'll see. That's all. That's where I'm at. I mean, you know, call it what you want, you know. I'm straightforward about it. All I ask you, use the facts, not alternative facts, when you go out and get signatures, because we are teaching our children through the democratic process that many want to say that we're trying to take away, but we're teaching our children, and when these stories float down to them and they come home and start asking questions about things that they heard, it becomes very toxic. Our community becomes toxic, and that's not what we want to have. And if you're saying, "Well, if you don't make this decision, it wouldn't be toxic," no. Stick to the facts, stick to the truth, go do what you need to do. I'm ready to vote on it, and I think, Cliff, this is going to hinge on you and whether you're ready to move forward, because I am. I believe Lori is. And quite frankly, I'm ready to put it to November, because, you know.
Well, I think there also was a suggestion to, if we did have a June election, to have it for a four-and-a-half-year term, so that we would eventually get back onto a November cycle, and I prefer that if we were to have a June election. But I am prepared to vote. I want to be respectful of council member Davis as well. I don't know if there's, maybe the city attorney can counsel us on whether we can have votes tonight by the rest of the council, or whether we have to delay.
You do not have to delay. But if you were going to adopt the ordinance, it would have to be as you introduced it in January. If you're going to move the election date to November of 2018, or if you're going to do the November, excuse me, the June 2018 and thereafter, four-and-a-half, you would reintroduce the ordinance tonight and then have the second reading of that at your first meeting in March.
Okay.
So, I mean, you can adopt what you introduced in January. If you want to change it, as I've suggested, then it would be reintroduced tonight with a second reading in March.
Okay. My preference is to, you know, if we adopt it tonight, or not to adopt it tonight, but to have the election in June, if that's what the council, you know, majority wants, but to have it not for the four-year term, but for a four-and-a-half-year term, so that we could get onto a November cycle. So, that would require a second reading.
Okay, so, it'd be a six-month extension within a four-and-a-half-year term after 2018.
Correct.
All right. And so, I know where you stand, Clark, on the survey, and so, it doesn't sound like you're very interested in it either, Terry, but I wanted to ask you.
I'm happy to.
Lori, sorry, Terry.
I am happy to support your idea of a survey to get the pulse of the community. I know that, for me, I, in my heart, believe that we should hold our election as scheduled and work to get within the state guidelines by 2022. I don't think that we need to be in compliance, you know, within six months. I think we should take the time that the state has given us to become in compliance. I'm happy to work with the group on a survey or have a survey done if that helps the group, the council, get a better understanding of where the public is. And I truly think we should have November elections. I really don't want to go into June election cycle and not have the traditional November elections. I think that that's just going to be cumbersome for us, so.
Now, say we did the survey, and the survey came back with the public allowing the, or I shouldn't say, with the majority of the people who've taken the survey saying the 2016, I mean, the 2018 six-month extension is okay. Would you accept that and vote that into the ordinance? Because if it was the other way around, and it was 2017 election, I would say, "Okay, that's what they said, and I'll go with 2017." So, I'm willing to, you know, if that's what the survey of registered voter says, that's what they want to do, then that's what I would go with. So, I'm going to put that on you.
You know, it's always hard to try to figure out if you're going to do the populist thing or you're going to do what you feel is right, and I agree with Clark in that degree, that, you know, it's always hard to say, "Well, if everybody wants to jump off the bridge, I'll jump with them." But, you know, if, I would go along with that, if that's what, if we could get a consensus on the council, but I'm not sure we would get that from the four that are sitting here tonight, and I think that's what we would need to go forward with a survey and have it be, feel legitimized. If someone is, if half our council is saying, "Oh, that's bogus," to do that, then we're not going to be doing any good. But I mean, I am happy to support you in that.
I appreciate that. So, if that, if we did a survey and it was a 2017 election, I would say, "Okay, I'd be fine with that." You know, I hear what people have said about that petition, and to me, a petition's not the way to go, to get, you know, to persuade the council to decide. To me, a non-bias type of approach reaching out to the community is better, and a six-month extension is comfortable for me. And so, that's what I, I'm hoping that I can get my council to agree to. And if not, and then that's fine. I mean, that's, you know, I don't agree with my wife all the time, and she doesn't agree with me all the time, and that's just the way it is when you're on a council. That's why you have five people.
So, not only that there's the issue of, like, whether the survey would be, you know, binding or non-binding, or biased or unbiased, but there's the cost of the survey. Are you thinking of mailing it out, and who's going to pay for that postage, and what would be the estimated cost and time on staff?
So, Clay, can you provide some input on that, please?
Well, it does obviously matter how you do the survey, but let's assume it's a written survey that is mailed out to the 2,600-some-odd registered voters of Brisbane, and you accompany that with an opportunity for people to also do it online. Require a unique identifier for both the mail as well as the online. Our estimate in terms of printing and mailing would be in the neighborhood of $5,000 to $10,000.
Wow.
Probably $5,000 to $7,000, but $10,000 at the most. That obviously doesn't count staff time, but the other issue for you to consider is just the timing of this, and I think when I talked with council member Lentz about this, in terms of timing, if you do want to go forward with a survey, it probably would be best that you identify two council members to work on that and then empower them to do the wording of the survey, because if we have to come back a month from now with the wording, you know, and then it's probably another. Our estimate is that from the time you mail it out, you have to give people at least two weeks, I would think, to respond to it, and then there's, you know, the period of time to tabulate it, and so, if everything goes well, which it never does, but if everything went well, you know, that's three weeks of time. So, the clock is running on us, as we all know, and it's going to be a challenge to have information back to you by the March meeting if you decide to do this tonight, but that certainly would be our effort. I hope that helps a little bit.
Okay. So, three weeks, and does that include time for the subcommittee to come up with the wording of the survey and have the rest of the council approve of that and give comments?
Well, we could certainly circulate it to the council members. I'd obviously have to check with the city attorney in terms of, you know, that part of the process, but assuming we could do that. But what I'm assuming in terms of dates is that if you made a decision tonight and we get drafted and get it mailed by, let's say, February 14th, give people two weeks, that's February 28th, and this is a hope and a prayer on my part to some extent, that between February 28th and March 2nd, we can get it tabulated.
No disrespect, Cliff, but Lori, unless you're in favor of a survey.
I'm not.
We're wasting conversation here.
I think it's a lot of time and cost.
I'm ready to move forward. You're willing to extend it to six months, and I'll make a motion to waive second reading of ordinance 614.
I thought that, respectfully, I thought that we had noticed council member Davis's request that we don't vote on this tonight out of respect for her wanting to speak on it.
No, she's going to vote no for it anyways.
She said she wanted to vote.
It doesn't matter. Just another delay.
Yeah.
She said she wants to vote on the item, and she would review the videotape from this meeting before doing so, but I don't think she said that she needed to have any more discussion from her.
No, but she did, and she expressed that to me also, that she wanted to be here for the vote on the item and would ask that we did not vote on it tonight.
Yeah, no, she did provide that letter, and that was something you did state at the beginning of the meeting, Lori, that we would not vote on it tonight. So, I think we should uphold that. I hear what you're saying, Clark, but I think all council members should be present.
I disagree.
Okay. Well, it doesn't take effect until she's voted, so I don't think it really.
I think we should move forward.
Madam Mayor, to the chair, please, if I may, just a clarification.
Yes, please come up.
Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to clarify for the record, because I read in the staff report that there was a possibility for a mail-in ballot for 2017, which would be extremely, would defray the cost quite a bit. I think it was like $37,500 was the cost, and I didn't hear any mention of that, and I heard that 2017 would be $17,500, but no mention of the possibility of 2017 with a mail-in ballot, which would only be less than $4,000. So, I just wanted to get a clarification on that for the record, what the cost of the proposed mail-in ballot election would be for 2017 versus 2018, because it seems like it would be a lot cheaper. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the city attorney.
The, there could be a mail-in ballot for 2017 only if all the jurisdictions who are going to have a matter on the November 17 ballot agree to have a mail-in ballot. And if any of the jurisdictions who would be on that ballot do not want to have a mail-in ballot, then there would not be a mail-in ballot. There may be some legislation, there is some legislation coming forth where it may become mandatory beginning in November of 2018 if the Board of Supervisors decides that that's the way that elections will be held in the county, but the November 17 is only if all the jurisdictions would agree, which may or may not happen.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, well, as to the survey, I guess we'll take up that issue first, the survey and then the vote, so.
Madam Mayor, could I, just, my staff is sending me a message.
Okay.
So, one other option, I guess, that we had investigated was a company that would do door-to-door surveys, and that cost is about $5,000 to $6,500, assuming that we write the survey, which I believe is the intent, and it would take about a week and a half to two weeks to conduct that.
Door-to-door, meaning it would be dropped off, like, in people's front doors?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I know up at the ridge.
In some fashion.
People are pretty sensitive to that, and. Yeah, I know up at the ridge, people are pretty sensitive to that, and a lot of people up there don't actually go through their front door, they go through their garages. So, I'm not, it would be less effective than coming through the mail. People might not receive it in time. But I'm glad you're telling us about that option.
I think the idea is to go and knock on doors, but-
Knock on doors?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And deliver the survey?
Yeah.
If people are home?
Or take a survey.
Oh, would that be to actually have a- Would the survey be written, or would it be a poll, like, in person?
Well, it'd be a survey, and it would, it would actually be a physical person coming to each door and trying to get ahold of people. And it's like any survey mechanism, where you're trying to get a representative sample. So, if, you know, like, when we did do the polling, the survey for the Baylands, we had, as you recall, just a very high level of participation for, compared to most companies. Trying to read text and talk to you at the same time.
Okay. Now, that's an interesting idea. Personally, I'm not sure that I'd feel comfortable with people getting asked on the spot what their opinion is, without having the chance to think about it, and perhaps do some research on their own. So, I, with all due respect, I would not feel comfortable spending $5,000 to $10,000 on a survey, which prob, which may or may not influence the decision of the council, after all. And it will take time. So, because Councilmember Davis is not here, and she did request that we postpone the vote on this matter, with all due respect, Clark, I'd like to hold the vote later.
I think it's a mistake, and here's why. Because we're gonna bring up this survey crap again, and then you're gonna get three votes, and it's gonna extend it out, and then it's all becomes moot anyway. So, we're wasting our damn time here. Either we vote on it tonight, or forget it. Really?
I hear what you're saying.
I mean, you know, and I made a motion, I didn't hear a second. This whole thing would die because of lack of motion.
Well, are you prepared to vote this evening? I guess that's the question.
Okay. I told you my opinion. You know, my thing is to work on the Baylands. And if extending the term by six months helps us with that, then that's what I would want to do. If you do not feel that that's justified, then you should go out and get the signatures and have the referendum. You know, that's another way of voting, to say no. Right? You have that right. You know, as a council member, you've elected me to evaluate the information and give my best opinion. And that's where I am, even though I don't like the extension personally, myself. But, again, you know, I'm looking, again, I'm looking at what I think is best for the community, and not to have an election during the time that we do our deliberations. You know, and that's fine. You know, you're one person, there's one people here, and I'm one person on the council. And I've been elected to make tough decisions, right? And that, and it's decisions that maybe people aren't gonna like. Again, you have that right to do the referendum, and so be it. Go out and get the signatures, and if that's the way that it turns out, then we have the election 2017.
But I thought that we weren't happy having the four-year, the June elections going forward, and with this, what we had the first reading on, we would be having a for, a June election going forward. And I thought that's not where we wanted to go, but-
What I, would it, so, we talked about having a six-month extension and having a four-and-a-half-year term-
But that's not-
-in 2022.
But that would be introducing a new resolution, or a new ordinance tonight.
That is correct, right, Michael? So, that would be, that's what I, I'm hoping that that is the motion to do that.
The motion's to pass as written.
Okay. I wanted to, well, okay, let me, Michael, the council can come back at any time and decide to make the 2018 election a four-and-a-half-year term, correct? We don't have to do it tonight.
Right. You, if the ordinance is adopted as is, then presumably you will have a June 2018 election. But you could certainly, I mean, the ordinance can be amended in the future to change that to a November even-numbered years.
Got it. Okay, okay. So, it doesn't need to happen tonight, but that is what I'd like to do in the future. So-
Can you clarify, what is what you'd like to do in the future?
You know, it doesn't matter about what's on the table before us. Just my own decision, you know, what I'd like to see us, as a council, discuss at a future council meeting-
Is.
Is to eventually move the election to November-
Okay, right.
-in 2022. But right now, we don't need to make that decision.
Okay. So, we could make the, if we passed the ordinance tonight, we could have the election slated for June 2018, but at some point before that election, we could bring it up again and extend the term of, not extend, but vote before, prior to the June 2018 election, vote that we want to have that term for four-and-a-half years, get us back to a November cycle.
That is correct.
Right.
Okay. Well, there's a motion?
I already did.
I haven't heard a second. Personally, I want to respect Councilmember Davis and have the vote taken when she's here, so that she can give her input. I don't want to have it reopen, though, for the whole public to come forth and repeat the same comments. I'd like to just have her give her input, and for us to take the vote. I mean, it'll be the same ordinance, but it would, which would be, I guess, would that be, this is the second reading, but it would be a continuation of the second reading.
You're basically, you would be, if there's not a, if there's not a second, then there'd be a motion to continue the item to March 2nd, and it'll be back on your agenda, and because it'll be on the agenda, the public will have a right to speak on it.
Of course, they would have a right to speak, but I don't intend it to be as extensive of a discussion as it's been tonight, because I think everybody understands everyone's positions. The point of continuing it would be simply to let Councilmember Davis give her input and be able to participate in the vote.
If you're, just as a thought, if you're going to not adopt it as written, and you do think you want to go to the November even-numbered years, then would it make sense to, you know, to reintroduce it tonight? Councilmember Davis still have an opportunity to vote on it on March 2nd, and then you don't have, you wouldn't have a, have to come back and amend it at a subsequent time. Just a thought.
That's a good idea. Okay. I'd be fine with that suggestion. So, we would reintroduce the ordinance with the modification that it would be for June 2018, but for a four-and-a-half-year term, to get us onto the November cycle, in the following cycle.
And would also be June of 2020-
Right.
-to get to a November 2024.
I'm sorry, I'm ready to move forward tonight. I'm just-
Right. I'm ready to move forward, except that, out of respect to Councilmember Davis.
I know.
I think if we introduce this ordinance tonight, that gives, not, excuse me, if we introduce the ordinance as amended, that gives her an opportunity on the second reading. And that, I think, would still preserve her vote. Does everybody understand that?
I understand it. I'm just, I totally got the conversation. I was going to, you know, I see where you're going, and I'm just saying, I'm ready to move forward tonight with the ordinance as written.
Okay. So, I'm with you, Lori, on this, so we have two members. How do we get the quorum? And I know that you're not gonna vote for any of that, right? I mean, so, sorry if I'm making a decision for you, but, you know, just based upon what you've said, either these two options doesn't work for you, so I-
If you don't take action on the item, then it'll be, I'm sorry.
I am certainly would, if the ordinance is going to be either reintroduced, modified, or approved as it stands, and everyone knows that I'm out of the cards, because I'm not gonna approve either one, I think that it'd be the best thing to do, is to modify it now, so we know what it is, and we don't have to go through this BS again, and say, "Well, now we're gonna change it from a four-year term to a four-and-a-half-year term," and have the same kinds of discussions. So, you know, I would think that, and I don't know if there is a second at the dais, because I'm not hearing that, because of the conversations that I'm hearing. And if there's not a second for the motion that we have as stand, because we want to respect Councilmember Davis, then I would think that the councilmembers who are in favor of having a November election would want to do that now, so that when they come back, it is a possibility that we can be done with this for the time being.
Okay. So, I'd like to then make a second motion, that we introduce a first reading of an ordinance that is for June 2018 election with a four-and-a-half-year term, and the same thing for the following two-year, the election that comes two years later. So, we have now second, two motions on the floor.
All right, I will second your motion.
All those in favor?
Hold on before we take a vote. I'm gonna ask the city attorney, if there's only two votes, and it goes two to two, what happens?
Then it's a no.
Then we are, then nothing happens, and it's not introduced, and the ordinance as introduced will stay in play until it either does not get three votes, until it doesn't get three votes. If it never gets three votes, then we stay with the, with the system that we currently have. And we have to, you know, at some point, presumably after the November 17 election, the council has to make some decision in terms of getting the election cycle onto an even-numbered year, but until that happens, we stay the course.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of the second motion?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed?
Abstain?
I'm not abstaining, I'm thinking. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we have three ayes, one opposed.
All right. Can we take a break? Adam, chair.
The motion passes, and can, sure, can I just clarify then? I want to restate the motion and make sure I understand, the public understands, what happens to the second term. Okay, so, it's a motion to move the election from November 2017 to June 2018 for a four-and-a-half-year term, and to move the election from November 2019 to November, to June 2020 with a four-and-a-half-year term, correct? And that will get us back on the November cycle?
Correct. Then the councilmembers elected in June of 2018 would serve until November of 2022, and similarly, the councilmembers elected in June of 2020 would serve until November of 2024.
Okay.
And then-
And that would get us in compliance.
Then you're into the November four-year cycle after that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and we will now take a break. Thank you, everyone.
Are you guys from Opus?